Okay, we'll go ahead and call the planning commission to order. Start with the local, please.
Thank you. Chair Lane.
Here.
Commissioner Tanelli.
Here.
Commissioner Sokla.
Here.
Commissioner Lamb.
Here.
Okay, great, we're all here. And now, the next item on the agenda is public comments. And this is for items that aren't on the agenda. The reason we bring these up is sometimes someone will come up and bring up something that we'll look into from that point on, or they'll highlight something in the community that they think would be appropriate for us to know about. So I'll go ahead and open up the public comment section for the items not on the agenda. Anybody here to speak on that? No mad rush to the microphone, so I'll go ahead and close the public comment on item two, and then bring us up to the approval of minutes from the meeting of February 28, planning commission.
I have no change.
I didn't see anything either. No comment?
None.
All right. Got a motion and a second.
Second, I guess.
All right, motion second. Motion second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, closed, none. All right, so that passes unanimously. And now, we will go for the public hearings element. And let me just go over how we approach this. We start off with an update from the staff, and the staff gets us an overview. Then, if there are any questions of staff, staff comments, the board will, the commission will ask questions of staff. Then we'll open up for public comments. We'll start with the applicant themselves, and then anyone else who likes to speak on the item. And we'll close the public comment section and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. And we'll do that on every item. Anyone who comes in, I'll go through this one more, where you can all explain it to them when they come in. All right, so we'll go ahead, and then we'll start with item four A, heritage tree removal permit at 28 Selby Lane. Staff report, please.
Thank you. So the request before you tonight is for a heritage tree removal permit to remove one heritage cedar tree. That's about 26 and a half inches in diameter. It's located just outside the main building area for the property. A little bit of overview of the property itself. The property does have permitted plans and is under construction for an approved single-family home, detached garage on the right side of the property, opposite the side of where the proposed tree to be removed is located, as well as a poolhouse or cabana in the rear right as well. The lot itself, stop there, thank you. This diagram up here shows the lot configuration. On the right of the screen is the front of the property. You can see that the lot is elongated in shape, so it's over two times as deep as it is wide. It is more narrow than what a new lot that would be created under the subdivision standards would call for. The basis for the tree removal, based on the materials that were submitted as part of the application, was for a, well, first of all, for a design preference to have two garages that flanked evenly on both sides of the detached, excuse me, of the main residence, detached garages. You can see from the plan there on the screen, the house being there smack dab in the middle, and the outline of two L-shaped buildings that are symmetrical, both in their positioning and their shape. So again, the one garage on the right-hand side has been approved, the one there on the left has not yet been approved, as its approval would be contingent on this tree to be removed. That tree could not be preserved, based on the opinion of our town arborist, as well as the project arborist, if that garage were to be constructed as it is proposed, as it is proposed in its situation as well. The project architect has put forth comments on alternatives that have been considered, given the narrowness of the lot. They, again, preferring to have that design approach as it is shown there, up there on the screen. The project arborist report, related to an assessment of this tree, notes the tree in fair condition. The arborist report does not provide any opinion or detail beyond determination that that tree is in fair health. The project applicant request, however, does surmise that the tree itself, there, you can kind of see it in the bottom left-hand corner of the screen, as it is very tall, a singular tree by itself, with some lean, would be more vulnerable to fail. That opinion is not stated in the project arborist report. Town arborist, of course, has peer reviewed. The project arborist report visited the site prior to the application being submitted tonight, and jumping back even further, prior to all of the physical improvements on the site that have already been approved, the project arborist, or excuse me, town arborist, did go out to the site and was able to approve the removal of 11 other heritage trees that were determined to be dead or dangerous, before the site development structures were approved. She does not find that this single leader tree to present a significant safety concern, she finds that tree to be in moderate condition. For those reasons, is not recommending that the tree be removed. An additional piece to highlight as part of the project application request, while cedar trees are native to the town, the project applicant is proposing, if the commission were to approve that tree removal, to have a replanting plan of three, excuse me, two 36-inch coast live oak trees, and one 36-inch camper tree. The oak and the camper-type species are shown there up on the screen on the bottom right. So for the reasons, as I previously stated, given the town arborist's professional opinion, her assessment of the tree of the site, as well as the fact that there is alternative locations available for an accessory building to be constructed on the site, albeit not within the programmed approach that this particular property is desiring to take, alternatives are available that would not impact this tree nor additional trees, and still allow for the construction of an accessory structure.
Or a use of a garage.
As a use of a garage, correct.
Okay.
So for those reasons, staff is recommending that the commission deny the removal of the requested cedar heritage tree before you tonight.
Okay. Any questions to staff?
One other note, just typographical, both in the conclusion and in the alternative formal motion of the report, references an oak tree, and that should reference cedar tree.
All right. All right, I'll go ahead. No questions to staff, and we'll go ahead and open the public hearing. We'll hear from the applicant first, or go ahead.
Good afternoon. My name is John Merton. I'm with Studio Green, we're landscape architects. We've been helping the client develop this project, and thank you for the breakthrough report. The owner is here, and also the architect, Scott Stotler, who will speak a little bit after I do. So the incense cedar calycedra's occurrence, while it's native to California, this isn't the typical habitat for this particular tree. It's native more to the mountainous regions of California up to Oregon. And usually, it's grown in, it grows in slope conditions, you know, like in Yosemite and places like that. So while they do exist here and there, and they have been planted because they perform pretty well, it's really not its natural habitat, unlike, for example, the oak tree, which is actually very suited. And I think we would have been more excited about that particular tree at the beginning of the project, if it had been more of a, you know, well-structured, stately oak tree, probably would have worked around it, would have embraced it. But in this case, as a singular tree, in fact, we didn't really give it a lot of thought as something valuable, until it came out that it needed to be protected, and it was a heritage tree. I have a couple maps, I don't know if you're interested, but actually, the distribution of this particular tree throughout California, if you're interested. Then, in terms of studying keeping the tree, the one thing is that when you add the tree protection zone, it's encroaching approximately 40 feet into the property, and it's 140 feet wide. So it's very limiting as far as the influence of this particular tree on the narrowness of this particular lot. So it's like 28% of the lot is affected in width. It also forces the accessory structure to be 130 feet away from the front yard setback, or front yard property line, which is very excessive, actually, and pretty untypical of many homes that are developed in town. So it's a pretty significant burden for this client to have to adjust the design that much for what we consider to be really a somewhat marginally appropriate tree, anyway. The other issues that happen when you slide the garage accessory structure further back into the property, is that the roof line of that garage structure starts to become visible from the interior living spaces of the house that's already been approved. So the living room will have views out the window, you'd actually be looking into the roof line of the garage. We're also concerned that we wanted to create an outdoor garden space for our home office in this space, and by moving the garage further back, it would drive the parking and associated paving area further back, compressing that outdoor garden space. Also, it would be increasing the amount of square footage dedicated to car maneuvering, which we felt, you know, we want to limit that if we can, whenever possible, because we prefer to have more landscaping and more garden space than more car space. Then, the tree itself isn't a particular great example of an incense cedar, while the size does make it a heritage size. It has some thinning towards the base, it has a distinct lean, it's a solo tree. So many aspects of it just sort of aesthetically don't contribute to something that's particularly spectacular. I think you had mentioned the corrections, and then only on, so our recommendation, our suggestion, our hope, is that you would be interested in approving the alternative formal motion, and that, and then just for correction, it's a cedar tree and the address is 28 Selby. I think that's just some language that was left over. So that concludes my comments.
All right, any questions?
If you have any questions, and I'll allow them.
What changed on the plan? There was an initial plan that was submitted that didn't have the garage, is that what happened?
No, no, we had the garage, we had the tree, but we thought that the tree would be approved to be removed, so we didn't, because we just didn't think that it was particularly valuable. But then it was determined that it was, you know, reasonable to keep it.
So the original plan had the lot garage in this location?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Good. Okay. As if it could be removed.
Well, we just, I think it was our assumption, but, Thomas, go ahead.
So I was called out maybe a year ago to look at the site, and they applied for 12 tree removals. And so since the beginning, I said this one wasn't approved for removal. However, they did still apply with the two garages, but I wasn't able to approve the two garages, because I denied the tree. And so we asked them to take off the second garage from the plant, so they could move forward with the project, because they had a timeline. We didn't want to stop them from their timeline. It says get the second garage approved.
I got it. Okay, so the project moved ahead without a second garage, with the idea that there being a second.
So that they could move along with their.
All right.
And began this process, because that wouldn't happen.
That's a little bit backwards, but yeah, I got it. Go ahead. Go ahead and introduce yourself. Thank you.
If I may distribute just something right now, it helps explain what I'm going to talk about real quick. Good afternoon, members of the commission, members of staff. For the record, I am Scott Stotler, Stotler Design Group. We're doing the architectural work. I met the other partner, I did Todd's house years ago. Anyway, sorry. So whenever we first looked at the property, what I've given you is an exhibit that has two pages in there, and I'll give Sally a chance to see.
Okay, thanks.
What you're looking at is, when we first went to the site, we looked at it, the front trees that are up at the street that we've actually been able to take out, there was rodents in there, they'd been overrun. Nobody really, for years, maintained any of these trees, including this particular cedar. So when we looked at the property, one thing we noticed right away was this property is on Selby Lane, and there's a lot of traffic going through there. And as a result of trying to pick up a design that the owners wanted, they want more of a nice, symmetrical, if possible, would be the desire, more of a contemporary-style home. So what we're trying to do is, we're trying to expand the width of the house such that it blocks some of the noise for the backyard of the buyer, whoever's going to live in the house here. And so as a result, we've got 39, I think, foot setbacks on the sides, and on a narrow lot, it really limits the width of the house and the curb appeal. So what we tried to do, is we thought, okay, well, if we detach some garages, those garages can go 10-foot setbacks on the sides, and as a result, block a lot of that noise that's coming from Selby. So that was our whole approach at the beginning of this narrow lot. The other thing that is an issue that caused part of this, is the fact that to do an accessory structure, if it's in front of the house, it has 120-foot setback from the street. So our start line of where we could even locate the garages, we're 120 feet back, which happens to be almost the exact location of where this cedar is. And my experience in doing projects over the years is that generally, you know, when we see an oak tree, or we see mature trees, we want to make this like a park-like setting in the front, pick up a lot of landscape, and we're proposing to plant a lot of trees across there, including across the front. So the design that we did, as a result of the garages needing to be 120 feet back, then set the house even further back, which we had to have an eight-foot separation as a result of that, to qualify as a detached structure. And that's what drove all this, was that. And at the beginning, Sally is correct, we met with Sally, and Sally mentioned, she said, you know what, that tree is going to be a protected tree, that she's not going to incline to let us take it out. So we knew that going forward, with the idea that we could somehow approach the planning commission and ask that this tree be able to be taken out, and replaced with some nice oak trees in exchange, and a camper tree, so two oaks and one camper. What we did do, what we did try to do, though, was we met with our arborist, Kevin Gilte, and we actually, even before we got the permit, just before we got the permit, we moved the house two foot further back. And the result was to try to accommodate and mitigate to be able to keep that tree. So we did that, and likewise, brought the garage back even a few more feet, and moved it over also, so that garage on that left side, you'll notice, to shift it as far to the left as we can get it, and back to keep it away from that tree. And we had talked to our arborist, and he felt that, based on the species of that tree, and if I'm putting words in your mouth, Kevin, correct me, felt that perhaps that tree could be maintained, the health would not be destroyed, and we're building, I think it's like eight feet from that tree. But according to the TPZ rules, I think we need like 13 feet away from there, based on the diameter of the tree, which created even more of an impact. So we knew that at some point, we'd have to come forward, planning commission, ask this permission to take that tree out, replace it, make that big area park-like setting. If we could bring the whole house forward a ways, that would have been nice. We did not have that option because of our choice of the detached garages, to try to help widen the footprint of the house to mitigate the noise that's coming into the back. So that was our premise in our approach. And we knew that if this did not get approved, we'd have to somehow redesign our garage and accommodate it. Problem is, you know, vehicles have to be a certain size, and for it to be a garage, it needs to have decent dimensions to make it work. And so it's going to be challenging, to say the least. And also, the reason I put an exterior in there, what I did on the landscape exhibit, was I took with a red marker and put where that tree is. You see the red marker of the circle? That's that tree. If you look at the elevation in the front of the house, that's the concept we were designing around. And we felt that we had a really good case to build, because of the narrowness of the lot, and the fact that the tree is not an oak tree. And my experience over the years, I've had projects, many projects, we've been successful in being able to remove a tree here and there. Now, it's true, we did take out 11, Sally stays correct, but those trees were not maintained, they were not in great health, and like I said, there was rodents, and it was overgrown in the whole front of that street. That's all been since cleaned up. And if you look at the landscape plan, we're trying to make, as a result of the 120-foot setback, we're trying to make that whole front feel like a park. And we believe also that that tree in itself, it's leaning, and the arborist has told us that in time, it could be an issue with the health of that tree, because of the lean that it's got. And it would also throw the balance of the architecture off, and I know that's really a not issue when it comes to making decisions, I understand that, in making the findings. But I just want to at least state our premise.
Okay.
So if you've got any questions?
Any questions?
I have a question. Notwithstanding the garage on the right-hand side, are there any other mitigations you considered for reducing the noise impact than putting the left-hand side?
We are picking up a, and we've got it approved, the whole front masonry wall in the front of the house. But my experience is, walls are probably about the only thing that mitigates noise. Trees, landscaping, we've not had a lot of success with that. And so if we can pick up the garages, I think the garages, by them being taller than an eight-foot fence, or a six-foot fence, there's going to be noise bouncing over that. So those garages really have a function. They're also to not make this, this is proportionally speaking, even though it's a bigger lot, when you look at the width of this lot, and then the side setbacks, we don't have much of an envelope to work with. We were going to push the house back anyway, but we couldn't figure out where to put the garages. And so we didn't want to have a garage in the dead center of the lot, flank them on the sides, and that was what drove all this.
Are there three-car garages?
They are. They are three-car garages, yes.
Okay. All right. Any other questions?
Oh, I would like to make one comment. If we did do a two-car garage on that left, or something like that, it would have to be not two-car wide, it would be a narrow looking garage. It would definitely look odd on the front, in our opinion, with the balance we've got right now. So that's why I thought that exhibit might be good to look at.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
Hi, just a very quick comment. My name is Sharon Zerafi, I'm the owner. My only comment that we are not just identified with the whole goal of making things green. You can see from our plan, the one that is the colored one, which is easier to see, that that's what we are doing. So this tree is really, it's not a nice tree even, if you see it in life. It's titted, and it just stands by itself, and I think what we are proposing, in line with the city goal of making things look like a park, will be much more successful and much nicer with what we are proposing. And if we need to plant even more trees, more than the tree to replace, we are willing to do that. But looking at the plan, I think you get the feel, that's our whole goal here, with the very deep front that we kind of lost, but for our, from our point of view, we gained because we are doing a park setting.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anyone else to speak on the fact? Any questions? Okay. All right, and then I'll go ahead and close the public hearing, and bring it back to the commission for discussion and action as appropriate. So this is the issue that we came up with again and again and again, and that is the issue, which is, we're ordinance-driven, and how we can decide things. And so this is the great architecture, and the look of it's great, and the concept is very, very great. So that, the issue that I have to go through in my mind is, the ordinance requires us to do certain things to certain sized trees, and that is to protect them. And so the variation that we get around that is, something so unique about the situation, other than the architecture, that we would base our decision on that. So the question will be around the, you know, the sound mitigation. There's about 50 people here along the railroad tracks that have sound mitigation issues. So the question will be is, what's so unique about this to make this exception? I'm not seeing this, my mind, I'm listening to the other.
Yeah, actually, I would actually add to that, too. Seeing the staff report that says, and I'm a big one on preserving trees, and in this case, like you said, it's ordinance-driven, so it is what it is. But when our own town arborist says that she does not recommend removing this tree, and we've spent countless hours and hours and hours and hours and hours on heritage trees, that becomes my problem, too.
Yeah, that's, you were coming in also, when there's been more and more discussion around this, we probably have about, you know, at least eight sessions that I can think of, around the regulations around tree preservation, and the criteria for tree removal. And of all the criteria that is a fact, that is determined to be not a fact, or is architecture, unfortunately, a problem?
Well, I guess what surprises me, too, is that a design would be done on this, knowing that the tree was an issue, and that then coming back later on to try to get the tree removed, when it was already pretty self-aware at the time that that was an issue.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, that was, I guess that was part of the risk.
Sally, what was TPZ area of this tree? How far?
So we're still trying to decide that, that it would most likely be eight times to 10 times.
So there's currently a wire fence in the area?
It should be protected on-site right now, yeah, because they are digging, I think, for the basement currently.
So as of yesterday, when I went out to the property, there was a wire fence that did not look like it would meet the TPZ standards.
Right.
Okay, so I can take a look at that tomorrow.
There's a backhoe right there, just ready to rip it out.
And it's a massive piece of equipment that looked like it's ready to take that tree out.
Yeah, the tree is.
Well, depending on your decision tonight, I will go out there tomorrow and talk to the contractor.
The tree is sitting there shaky, going, please help me.
So I, I, yeah.
I have a comment.
Yeah, go ahead.
I hear everybody up here is struggling with the ordinance as it's written. However, I think that all the speakers tonight, starting with Mr. Martin, are very persuasive. And one thing that he has pointed out that hasn't been mentioned yet, is that the former house, which I see is now gone, in my opinion, was just 10 feet from the trunk of that tree, which is well within the protection zone. And around town here, we've all had experiences with trees being affected by the building of a wall, or a building, or whatever, and within the next couple of years, they decline and die. And that would be a terrific shame, if these people were forced to work around this tree, which I agree is unattractive, to maintain it. Secondly, according to John McClanahan, who is a homeowner and arborist in this area, he says, quote, "Arborists cannot detect every condition that could lead to a tree's failure. To live near a tree is to accept a degree of risk." And many of us in this room can cite examples of that. Also, besides those two factors, the owners have offered to replace this tree with two or three much more attractive trees, albeit young, two coast live oaks and a camper, as has been mentioned. And Sally, our arborist, has said that, in a memo to us, that this offer exceeds the replanting requirement, and is sufficient if the commission decides to approve the removal of the cedar tree. So all those things are influencing my decision, as you can tell. And lastly, though, there is a matter of property rights, which I think is compelling. And the fact that this tree is unattractive, it may be troublesome, not to mention the possible dangers, as its health continues to deteriorate, I believe we must approve the request to take the tree out. That's just my opinion.
And you're basing that criteria on the health of the tree?
Largely, along with all the other problems they have.
The only one that's relevant to the ordinance would be the health of the tree.
Okay, the health of the tree, of course, I've mentioned that primarily from the standpoint that it's already been, perhaps its roots have been injured because of the proximity to where the demolition occurred.
And so are you finding, what's the health of the tree?
As it stands right now, it's neither dead or dangerous, and at my level, that's when I decided the tree is dead or dangerous. And I don't feel this tree, even though people are saying it's ugly, it's a protected tree, because all species of trees are protected per our town ordinance, and I just didn't feel this was a tree that I felt was dangerous. They're currently building at what we would consider what architects have been doing, the distance that we've been doing before, so I'm not concerned about the roots being cut. And they already have to replace 11 36-inch boxes and 22, 24-inch boxes, based on their other removals, so. And I mean, from a staff perspective, the tree is not dangerous, and that's why we're here tonight.
Right. And that goes back to the discussions we've had in the last six or seven meetings, where we said, you know, was there a rule or not? And if there was a rule, are we going to enforce it? And if we didn't want to enforce it, we change the rules. So we modified the rules to make it more clear. And now this is a good example of one that's pretty straightforward.
This is a good example of, these have been presented more and more. This is a good example of, uh, the, these have been presented more and more. So maybe it's something we can look at, if the tree is in moderate shape, I can approve it. Um, but, yeah. Because there is like a, but, you know, if the tree is in moderate shape, I still don't feel that the tree is dangerous. And so I, I deny it, but if we, if the Commission would like me to approve trees that are even in moderate shape, then that's something we can discuss when we change the heritage tree ordinance.
That goes back to the idea that there were several trees removed because they weren't being taken care of.
Right.
And so we have one that's could be taken care of.
So I did remove any, I did approve, they approved pretty much every tree on that lot except for the oaks in the back. And, uh, I did approve ones that I felt were dangerous, are really just about to fail. And, um, so I did approve trees that I felt were hazards.
The lot is very clear now compared to what it was when they first started, because I used to go out there regularly after that, that lot was, before that lot was come. All right.
One more question for Sally. The lean of the tree has been mentioned a few times. Uh, what's your opinion on the lean of that tree?
I do think it has a slight lean, but I don't thi, I, I feel the lean has, it's been leaning like that since the beginning. And unless it was a new lean, I'm not concerned with the lean of the tree. And if they're not getting roots around there, which they shouldn't be, except for the, for the basement of the new house, then it shouldn't be a problem.
It doesn't lean as much as I, as, as, as much as I've seen trees. I've got twelve trees in my backyard that lean, so, so, about a lot. All right, so, and, uh, we've had the discussion, any other discussion? Any other comment or motion?
I move the TPCZ.
It is right here.
Okay. I move the decline admission by the proposed removal of one here cedar tree. That's leading, so the amount of it would be contrary to the purpose and intent of general plan. The list is outlined in the section four, and that the commission will deny the treatment when the subject conditions is listed in the document.
Who's the seconded? Any comments? All right, uh, all of you, there's aye?
Aye.
Oppose?
No.
All right, four to one, all right? And there's the field process, there's hung rates.
Ten days.
Ten days to, to field to the, to the town council. All right? Thank you. Thank you for coming. All right, uh, the next item is item, uh, this is natural heritage tree item. So, so this will be item four B, heritage tree removal at one forty Valparaiso, request for heritage tree removal, uh, on three heritage, uh, two, two heritage oak trees. We'll start with, and we'll start with the staff report, and we'll, yeah, that happens all the time. Uh, then, then we'll, we'll put the, put the advocates and then anybody else that would like to speak. So go ahead, we'll go with the staff report.
So the request before you is for the removal of two heritage coast-life oak trees at the Sacred Heart campus. Uh, specifically within the campus boundaries, there is the Oakwood Retirement Community. Uh, locationally, this facility is located kind of in the front center of the campus. It's not visible from any public right-of-way. Before I dive into the staff report, there are some photographs that were left for each commissioner that were submitted tonight by the project architect. There's a copy circulating to the public as well. One of the photographs, uh, the second page was included, uh, in your packet. Those show the two trees to be removed in a close-up vantage point. The photograph on top was not included as part of your packet, and those show the two trees in the context of the roadway. Um, speaking of the roadway, the catalyst for the proposed tree removal is associated with improvements to this Oakwood Retirement Community. Specifically, there are approved plans for, um, a minor seven-hundred-square-foot first-floor addition to the building. That addition context does not impact these two trees. However, it's the other associated improvements to this, we'll call it, facility that trigger the request for the two-tree removals. Specifically, there are requests for accessibility upgrades to the site that will include a newly configured parking lot. You can see that up on the left-hand side of the site plan there, um, as well as adding in some disabled parking spaces and an accessible walkway that currently does not exist, that allows, um, folks to exit their vehicle and have a safe path of travel to the, um, to the facility. Um, additionally, specifically in direct context to the two trees proposed for removal, which are shown up there on the screen, circled in yellow, uh, is the addition of some parallel parking spaces that will serve as a passenger loading and unloading zone that currently don't exist on the site. The nature of the whole subject and the physical associated improvements that I just described do trigger some requirements under the California Building Code for accessibility, specifically improvements that require, um, the dimensions of such to meet the American Disabilities Act or ADA complacency. Um, I, I have reviewed this proposed plan with our building official, and he did indeed certify that the movement to trigger these ADA accessibility-type requirements. He also evaluated, uh, the potential for those particularly parallel parking spaces and new sidewalk. Again, that does not exist now. Right now, there's people walking in the parking area, um, to get to the facility. That those, that sidewalk could be redesigned and still comply with ADA requirements. However, uh, it was evaluated that there could potentially be a greater number of trees that could be impacted while still meeting those ADA requirements. Whether you push it out further, you then reduce the drive-byle of the parking area, if you have it meander through the trees, you're, you're widening your physical footprint, um, and potentially impacting other trees that aren't shown, um, on that site plan. But I'm holding more clearly tone in the photograph that the architect submitted tonight, um, that kind of frame around the edge of the existing buildings there at Oakwood. There are a series of policies that the commission can consider, um, in evaluating the request before you tonight, which, um, fall again primarily under the premise of providing site enhancements and providing accessibility under building code requirements. There is an existing ordinance, uh, within the municipal code that speaks specifically to accessibility. Uh, while the request before you tonight is not falling under the confines of that particular ordinance, uh, that ordinance allows for requests for deviation from setbacks or other development-type standards to provide accessibility. I thought it was warranted to just highlight that to the commission to consider, um, potentially new decision-making as an adopted town policy that's related, for related improvements associated, um, to accessibility in, in the context of this particular application. The plans before you tonight do not propose any replanting, um, plan as it state, as it states. Uh, however, it is the town arborist's opinion, if the commission were to approve the removal of the two trees, that the standard required mitigation as within the adopted, um, ordinance do be required for this request. Uh, specifically, that would entail the replanting of two native oak trees, forty-eight-inch box in size, somewhere on, on the lot. So for those reasons, um, staff is recommending that the commission grant the heritage tree removal permit at, uh, one forty Valparaiso. Happy to answer any questions that you have. I see project architect this year and some other folks on behalf of the project.
All right, any questions, staff? Any questions, staff? Sally, what's the condition of these trees?
So one of them, uh, they're both leaning. Um, if you did take a look, you'll see that they're both leaning. One has other issues, it has some leaf blight, um, there were some broken branches, so I approved one of them. The other one just has a lean. Um, I also, John McLennahan is actually the, the private arborist for Sacred Heart, so I work with him a lot on this site. And we both felt, felt, felt after even having conversations with him that this tree shouldn't be approved at my level, because again, it leans, but it's not a dangerous tree. A lot of the trees are leaning there, so.
Tree one-twelve or one-twelve?
That is tree... One-ten is the one I, I recommended for removal, one-twelve, um, I didn't.
Right, okay, that makes sense, all right. That, that looks healthier.
Yeah.
One-twelve is healthy despite that severe leaning.
But I understand because of the ADA requirements that the trees should be removed. But at my level, the one of the trees was more dangerous than this one. Was just leaning, which I didn't feel was an issue. Along with John McLennahan, he didn't think it was a dangerous tree.
Right, okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
I just wanted to clarify, so you were saying that even the ADA requirement in the code with respect to what we decide on, we can consider it in our decision?
Uh, not ADA specifically, but accessibility.
Okay.
Um, the commission would need to make a basis of your finding. Uh, within the staff report, it provided a few adopted general plan policies within our land use element, within our open space and conservation element, as well as our housing element, that could be considered in support of the specifics of this particular application. I brought forward that ancillary ordinance as another town adopted policy for you to consider, um, as a basis potentially in, in making the finding.
Okay. So I have a question. So the reason we would be, to determine one-ten and one-twelve was because your recommendation for one-ten is that it be removed, and your, and your recommendation on one-twelve does not include that, because from an arborist standpoint?
Right, yes.
Okay, so you're, one-twelve just for an ADA stamp?
Yeah.
Well, you can't, you can't.
Yeah, I can't really do that, yeah.
The ADA is a background, is sort of a background thing. It's not, we would base it ours, ours on that, but it would just be something, by the way, this is another, uh, aspect of this situation, this unique situation. So it could be part of the uniqueness of this situation, but it could be based on that.
But can we consider it, it's kind of like a, it's secondary to the fact that, uh, new parking is being built? The new parking is for the housing, which, and the housing is related to the accessibility issue? So it's kind of one to be removed, it's related?
Yeah, right, so it's still revisited by design, right. All right, let's go ahead and, and, and hear from the advocates. Let's go to, I'm going to open the public hearing, go, or to advocate for that.
Good evening. My name is Phil Nettle, and I'm an architect with A.I. Nelson out of San Jose, and we are the architects for this project. And I have to compliment the staff report, I think it really capably outlined the reasons we are asking or making these site improvements and requesting that these two heritage trees be removed. As was stated earlier, this is a retirement community for elderly retired sisters, many of whom are over ninety years old. And our number-one goal on these site improvements was to make the site, this, the site safer and more convenient for the sisters. Right now, it's very hazardous. They're not able to transit the project and enter the building in a safe manner. Parking is haphazard. So the whole impetus is to upgrade the site, bring it into compliance with all accessibility laws, and make it convenient for the sisters, where we don't have to worry about them, uh, meeting their demise. Just to summarize once again the specific goals, generally, we just want to improve the circulation on the site. It's just not very good right now. Uh, we wanted to greatly enhance the safety of the residents. And foremost, in term of, from my viewpoint, is very in the project and in compliance with the ADA and the California Building Code. Anytime you make an addition, it's over a certain dollar figure. As an architect, I'm obligated to build, uh, to build the project, uh, up to these codes. And path of travel is number-one on the priority list, from public way to the building. So logically, if we have street-side parking, which is in demand on the campus, you know, they're very short on parking. And, uh, you logically have a sidewalk adjacent to, uh, where your cars park, and we also have our loading zone there. So I'm also concerned about the trees leaning, and I talked to our arborist. What he really said, I, if I can summarize it, is there's no way he could say when and if these trees would ever fall. He didn't, he did not, he was not happy with them leaning, obviously, but who knows? They could be there for another hundred years. But he also commented that the front of the building is so densely planted with trees, they're crowding each other out. If you look at the photos.
Right, we are, we are short.
That's why we didn't propose a replacement program, but we're, we're happy to, uh, do that. It's just where we put the trees. This is a heavily wooded campus, it's really a forest-like environment. And, uh, however you decide, we'd be happy to do a replacement, uh, program. So if you have any questions?
No.
Shoot. And I brought someone's sister tonight. Uh, if you have any questions, they're mine. Our gallery tonight, and we're concerned about their welfare.
And the, and the way I would have presented that, I would have said, we have some women who live there who are all over thirty.
And they are sharp.
That would be, that would be accurate, but not overly specific.
My name is Sister Patty Creeden, and I have the privilege of being the executive director for Atherton Sisters. For the sisters, it's a privilege for me to, to be there. Um, and it's amazing, you know, these sisters, the inside of the sisters, they bought this piece of property in the late eighteen hundreds.
Wow.
Sixty-two acres in Atherton, um, in the late eighteen hundreds. So they have been on that property, like Claire, Sister Claire tells me, before the city of Atherton began. Um, and I think that, and was the reason why they bought that property, because they did notice the beauty of it. It was a beautiful place to have children come and make sure the education, um, was a perfect place, both in what they received in education, but also for the beauty that surrounded them. And that continues till today. So the sisters that are there, so Inezzy Morris has been an institution at that school. And I think that what we want to continue is to keep the beauty on that property, but also to provide safety for the sisters that are now aging in that campus. And it, and the drop-off, I'll tell you an example that happened last week when it was raining, uh, just our entrance, that we enter into that building, the sister on her walker, as it was wet, it is only a slight little slope, she started, her, her walker started to go down too quickly, and she slipped to the ground.
Yeah.
And so those things are gonna happen more, because we have healthy ninety-year-old sisters over there, but they're gonna continue to age and more frail as time goes by. So, and we are committed to continuing more beauty. We actually did not do the landscaping plan yet, um, we, because we only, I wanted to assure I got this budget approved. Uh, but we will do a landscaping plan to make sure that we, um, keep the building, the property as beautiful as it, as always will be in, into the future.
All right, thank you.
Okay?
Any questions? No, thank you for those comments. Anyone else? All right, no one, no one else? All right, then I'm gonna go ahead and, and close the public hearing and bring you back, uh, for discussion on action appropriate.
I'm happy to go.
Yeah.
So, so actually, I'll check.
Go ahead.
So I would normally recuse myself on something like this, because I do so much work over Sacred Heart as a parent, former parent. And, and, but the, our, sisters correct, that, that, that this area was once a large, and still is a large campus, but the school portion that I do the work for is, has, has its own kind of governance, if you will, and management, et cetera. But I can completely empathize with the comments, and I've spent a substantial amount of time within that facility, and I've always been worried, not only about access, some of those trees that are in front, but also about the safety aspect, that there isn't a sidewalk there. So, um, I would concur with them that this is a great change, especially as, as responsible as the overall campuses for the trees and McLennahan's input. I think it's, I think it's a great opportunity here for, for this group.
Even driving through, when I went through on my tour, uh, I'm sitting there going like, okay, I'm not gonna look at the tree until I stop. Because it's a, it's a long, narrow, like, and there's, there's cars everywhere, and, yeah, so. And, and everybody gets to go on the whole tour too now, because it's one-way, it's one-way now. It used to be two-way, I hope, when you go down, right? So now you're gonna see the whole campus on the tour, so. That's the one thing about the traffic plan right now, that it forces you to go all the way. Uh, so it's, it is, uh, it's, it is an issue, it is, it is an issue. All right, so the only question I would think, uh, just to, if you're ready to make a motion, just to consider, is that, I, I would think that we'd wanna go ahead and add the idea that there'd be replacement, uh, plantings of some kind, and we could go ahead and, and one, that make it consistent with the way that we normally would process this. Two, it's a big enough property where something can be put along the edge of the canvas or something else. Um, I, I don't know, I think, okay, and tree will probably be something that will, that, you know, the other trees will die, and the next tree, the trees we plant will be there to, to go forward, so.
What's Sally's proposal?
Through the chair.
Yeah, go ahead.
We actually did, in attachment one, incorporate a recommended condition that encompasses that, condition number two.
Number two, thirty-six inch box?
Yeah.
Two forty-eight inch.
Yeah, the, the standard is one forty-eight per, per each native oak.
Yeah. So what, where did you say?
Forty-eight inch box, not, not forty-eight inch oak tree, right?
Yes. That's, yeah, that, I want to see that helicopter, Dan.
Yeah.
You're paying for it. Alright, so you, you have an idea?
Well, if it's already clear in terms of condition two, then I don't need, I don't have a problem.
Where does it say condition two in the formal motion?
It doesn't say it on the motion, it has on the permit itself, so it would be back another.
I got it, okay.
And through the chair, we would amend condition two to read forty-eight inch box.
Yes, that's what I'm looking for, it says that word.
I'm happy to make a motion, unless there's other comment?
Any other comments? Alright.
I've moved that the planning commission find that the proposed removal of two heritage oak trees, tree 110 and tree 112, at one forty about trisom and apton would not be contrary to the purpose and intent of the general plan, for the reasons outlined in the staff report and that the commission approved. The tree removal subject to the conditions as listed in the draft heritage tree removal certificate, and amend the item two to say two forty-inch, forty-eight inch box oak.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? All those in favor say aye. Aye. Opposed, none? Asked unanimously. Alright, thank you. Alright, that's what democracy looks like these days. Alright.
Got it up already, actually.
Alright.
Rosie, I'll take you down the road.
Thank you.
Go ahead and open the second door, if you would.
They're going to have this in the way.
I can get it up.
Okay, great. There you go. And by the way, you brought a bunch of the under, don't you?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, sure. Oh, no. Yeah.
With the, that door was obviously.
Yeah, this is, this is the under, this is the under. Alright, new business, item five A, discussion about the general plan update, amendments to the land use element.
Thank you.
There was some interesting reading in here. I was having problems taking it, but I didn't.
A lot of detail. Thank you. So, tonight we're bringing forward for discussion purposes, no formal actions being requested of the commission tonight, discussion regarding proposed amendments to the town's existing land use element of the general plan, just a real brief overview for those who may be watching. So, the town is undertaking a comprehensive update to your general plan. The first element that was brought forward to you, along with an overview of the process and schedule, occurred in December of last year, in which the commission reviewed and provided some staff direction on the existing open space and conservation element. So, tonight, consideration and, or discussion of proposed amendments to the land use element will be the second element that you will be considering as part of this process. Once all elements are brought forward to you for discussion, town-wide public workshop will be held comprehensively of all the elements, this will then all come back to you again, either in another study session format cumulatively, or as a formal request for you to consider the proposed changes. With that, land use element, just a brief 101 on what the, what it is, it's a mandated element as part of every general plan within the state of California. A land use element identifies the type, the intensity, and the location of different land uses. Here in Atherton, we're relatively unique in that our existing general plan has three types of designated land uses, residential, public facilities, and park and open space. There are no commercial, there are no industrial, there are no other types of residential beyond single family. The proposals before you tonight do not request to change any of those land uses, so there are no changes to any parcels as part of this process. The map shown here on the screen is a cleaned up version of what the existing land use map shows in the general plan with some more detail. It color codes those three different land uses that I just mentioned with everything yellow, of course being residential, everything blue being public facilities and schools, so that's all our private schools, all our public schools, and the circus, excuse me, and the circus club, and then those green parks, excuse me, not the circus club, and then the green being park and open space, as the Bear Gulch Reservoir located at the western end of the town, our town parks, and the circus club. So again, none of these are changed, changed designations from what your existing general plan currently reads. What are the element updates? A lot of it has to do with background language that the state of California requires land use elements to have, that our current general plan is lacking, so we've provided that background data as required by the state. Secondly, there are a series of new policies and actions, and those are identified within the revised element that are, were included just for internal consistency within the town, based on other adopted town documents and plans, such as our climate action plan, our Holbrook Park master plan, the civic center master plan is now addressed and incorporated in the general plan, since that is indeed the largest forecasted project identified within the town. So, pending any comments that the commission may have tonight on any of the text and/or map that is included in the administrative draft land use element, we would again incorporate all of those into a final administrative draft version to present publicly at a workshop targeted for that fall later this year. So happy to answer any questions that you have.
I know there's a lot of pressure for communities to add, add housing density, and I've been spending a lot of time in LA, and there are actually, for all the areas that my daughter lives in, there are no garages anymore, they're all just apartments in the backyard, and so there's all kinds of access issues with that, and there's, parking is, parking is a, is a one-hundred percent full-time job. And so, what I'm, what I'm concerned about is that we don't go down this path where, well, shoot, there's a garage, there's, there's two garages there in suburban properties, and, and we end up being sort of pushed into a density that the community doesn't, the community, are we still on that path?
Yes, so the overall policy that this land use element is attempting to encompass is to continue to maintain the town's small rural character of predominantly single-family residential. There's no policy within this element that would indicate or prove otherwise. I think a lot of policies that may suggest otherwise would be probably better incorporated in the housing element piece of the general plan versus the land use element, where you are not proposing to update the housing element as part of this process, since that's sort of its own, its own animal that has to be updated more frequently than the other elements based on regulations of the state of California.
Didn't we just do that too?
Yeah, the last RENA cycle, or regional housing needs allocation, two, two years ago? Yeah, two years at this point.
Are you sure you don't want to add that to the lesson?
It's coming back in two years from now, so, every four years.
You're the, you're the chair.
Just falling back, just falling back then, how long do you have my time?
You know, one thing, one other thing I would like to note, we have a, we should have a placeholder in here for a policy related to trees, depending on what, if any amendments are ultimately certified by the town council, we would certainly want to integrate that direction appropriately in a policy within the land use element. So, depending again, on which path that, that may lead itself to, in future heritage tree removal applications that you may see, you may have more direct policy to help you in your decision-making of heritage tree removal applications, again, whichever way that may lead itself.
Alright, cool.
I don't have any issues with this at all, I thought it was great. I mean, if that's mostly background.
And we'll, we'll see it repeatedly. Four months, six months, right? What's the timeline on this? It's like something at the end of the year, right?
Yeah, so I have the community workshop targeted in October, and then we would be, we are required to prepare an environmental document when you update a general plan, that takes a little bit of time, I have that about the same time in October, so you would see it again in the fall, cumulatively. The next element that we propose to bring forward to you is the traffic and circulation element in May, next month, no, almost next month.
Yeah, alright, good.
So I just have one minor question, that's on page ten, second from the bottom, policy LU three one, three dot one. Requesting the private school prepare master development plan.
Yes.
Aren't we already doing that on an annual basis?
We are.
Because it says proposed new policy in that cabinet.
We're doing it.
But it's not part of the policy.
Correct.
It's part of the agreement.
We'd like to strengthen the requirement.
Alright, I clarify that, thank you. That should be in there though.
We did that as part of the agreement for certain developed aspects that they did, so that.
Although it's part of the.
Well, it goes back even farther than ours, but.
Conditional use for it.
Yeah, that's right, that's part of the condition.
Right, okay, that's good, to be part of a policy, okay, thank you.
Alright, any, anything else on that? No more questions? Okay, then the commission report, anything in your court?
Actually, I have a question.
Go ahead.
I know it's going to push you over your sixty-two minutes, but actually, on, on, we're in that housing element where we talked about adding the additional units, the potential to add, I don't agree on this.
Oh, yes.
How, has that been implemented? Has, have people been doing it? Has it, I mean, are you seeing it sporadically, are you seeing it a lot? Because I, I don't, I don't feel like I see it in our neighborhood where somebody I could tell is, has their home and they're adding that on. So I'm just curious if that's taken yet, or do architects have questions, or what's happening?
No, there's not a lot of question, so since the state mandate that recreated these accessory dwelling units and allowing by right folks to convert existing space into these, what they're calling ADUs, we haven't seen a huge influx of applications, there are some, but what we see more are new units versus the conversion of existing units. Whether those new units are actually being utilized as they're intended to be, it's hard for us to say, because we're just at the initial plan check phases.
I've seen a couple of plans come through where it was designed as sort of a, you know, a visitor unit, a grand dining unit type thing, but they were, they were one bedroom place, or one, one bedroom, one bath, two bedroom, one bath type race.
Off the record, or on, on the record, but off, so in conversation, a lot of the architects tell me sometimes those spaces aren't intended to be used for their, the own project staff, or property staff.
Yeah, right. White room, whatever.
Okay. Okay, alright, and, and the only thing I have, I have is to, will probably be dovetailed to the staff report, because one of, one of the things I've been having issues with on this tree thing is just the, you know, we're, we're saving heritage trees that aren't always good-looking trees, you know, and that's, like this last, the last meeting we had, that tree was so borderline in my mind in terms of, about saving it, but by the rule that we set up, and by the fact we were trying to make it very clear that this is the rule, is putting us in this little tough spot where, yeah, if I could get that, if I could get a better tree over there rather than that one right there, it'd make a lot more sense, but we don't have, we don't have a leverage for that right now, other than saying, yeah, well, you know, no, but I think this one, then we start doing this sort of architectural type planning rather than by, by rules. So, you've got an update on what happened on our last month's appeal, right?
Yes, and, and a continuation of where that is going as an update as well, so.
And so that, so officially then, we're going to go over to the staff report, item seven.
So, the heritage tree removal application at two-two-two Camino Alago that you considered and denied with a free-to vote at your last meeting was, formal appeal was submitted to the council, the council did, after a fair amount of deliberate discussion, did decide to approve the appeal. I, I do want to, first of all, highlight two things regarding the discussion and the information that was presented at the council meeting, specifically, an updated Arborist report was submitted as part of the appeal application that was not presented to the commission, that, it, it didn't do any new testing, if you recall, there was some discussion of what other kinds of testing can be done, and there was a drilling type test, which was, it sounded like to be quite an expensive route to take, but there were more detailed evaluations by the project Arborist prepared in an updated Arborist report that was not presented to our town Arborist, nor was it presented to the commission. Secondly, an additional Arborist was brought on after, again, the materials were presented to the commission, that further supported the project Arborist enhanced report, again, that you didn't see. And then, thirdly, and lastly, there is a tree evaluation, tree hazard evaluation checklist, this is an industry standard form that those in the arboricultural community utilize as, just an additional resource piece and questions asked and boxes to check to assess the health of a tree, that was prepared, again, not presented to the commission as part of your decision-making. So, the council had a lot of discussion on that, they, at the end of conversation, there, the, I feel that the direction that was given was that tree preservation was, was certainly not to be considered less, or to be less significant in decision-making, but because of that particular tree's information presented that indicated a pretty relatively high risk of failure and hazard, that was the basis of their approval of the appeal.
And it was five oh, right?
It was five oh, but they, you know, they were concerned that there was additional information given to them that was not given to you.
And that was made clear.
It was, oh yeah, very clear.
Why would they not redirect it to the planning commission to review the new information?
That's what I was going to say, that was not lawful. Most, every other city would have, would have sent it back to us and said, on the basis of new information, the planning commission needs to see the end.
That was suggested as a possibility, they do have the right to decide it as a final matter, and they chose that option. I think also the fact that it was a three-two vote gave them the impression that perhaps planning commission was not sure about this.
At least two of them were pressured.
Yeah, so, well, and we, yeah, I'm sorry, I interrupted you, and we made it very clear to the commission, or just given to the council, the real tough conversations that you had at your February meeting, and I think some of them actually, I think, watched the video, because they were already aware of that fact, so they must have watched the video or at least reviewed the minutes.
But new information is new information, if we didn't see it, then we should see it again. That's, I think the council erred in doing that, I know they have the right to, but I think they opened themselves up to that. They completely opened themselves up if somebody really had an issue with it.
And that wasn't, that was one of the alternatives that were, were presented to them as one of their options.
To send it back?
Yes.
I thought you had to.
They'll have to, but they may consider doing that, because they may, they might end up saying, oh, these people.
Right, just basically.
But the other thing too, based on, based on, if you just watched the video, or, or saw the minutes, or whatever, on that, you would, you would see that there was enough question that we had about it, and we wanted more information, that to send it back really would have not done anything except burn up the applicant's time, with the idea that we were probably going to go the other way, because I certainly was on the, I was, I was, it's been really tough for me to do, what we talked about, doing, doing dumb, smart things, I know.
doing, doing dumb, smart things, you know? And I feel like we're stuck, you know, in this, you know, dumb, do the, do the not, not brightest thing that complies rather than the, than the brightest thing that doesn't technically comply. And so that, that thing is really tough for us. And if we go down that slope, it's going to go, the staff goes nuts with it because then, then it's like a random number generator, like when do, when do we approve or when do we don't approve? That's why I was, that's why I was so concerned about doing anything other than backing up the staff, the presentation on this first one because it, there was, there was nothing really that could equalize a lot. It was like, you know, the tree didn't lean that much, and so, and it was, it's, in my mind, it was, it wasn't, it wasn't anywhere near as pretty as some of the palm trees I see in town, but it was. By the way, I got a mailer on my doorstep saying that they wanted, they would buy our palm trees for two thousand bucks if they wanted to. I gave you my brochure.
You need to come back for it, meant for that.
That's right, I would.
So on that note, we, we as staff have been directed to bring forward your recommendation of amendments to the heritage tree ordinance to the council in April in a more study session format without the request for any action be taken. And, and what we'd like to do is broaden the conversation for more of a policy discussion to the point that you just made. Does the town want to entertain consideration of tree removals in more of a, I want to call it aesthetic basis, but can we, do you want to consider more mitigation of long-term replanting benefits perhaps based on the individual tree or not in development potential of a site? There is an envelope that's prescribed, and is it by right to develop to the maximum extent of that envelope, or?
Well, the other thing too is that there is, there is a situation where there is, in many, many, many lots, either because there have been, you know, not built on for a while or whatever, there's overplanning, right? And so, and there's, and there's very old trees, and there's trees that are sort of like been propped up for a long, like that tree last time was a tree that had been definitely propped up over time. So we're, we're getting to the point where there are old trees that are technically heritage trees. I don't know how many heritage trees I've seen that are just like, they're so, they've been so ugly. I go like, really, this is a heritage tree? So it's, you know, so it's just one of those things where I think some, something has to be done. So we got just a little bit of, sort of, whatever, whatever the criteria would be, there needs to be a criteria that is the wild card criteria for something.
Needs a little room.
Yeah, we need, we need, this is one area where, where, you know, having some clear kind of criteria around the use of the land or the use of the property relative to it, you know, would, would make, would make sense to us. Now, it's a slippery slope, and it would.
Sure, just a segue.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But the thing about this right now, that we don't, this could happen, so if we appeal, if we appeal, it goes right up to the, to the town, town council, and then they get stuck with it, and then they get stuck with, well, yes, it doesn't make sense. And we're the ones that are, the only ones that are stuck with the, with the rulings for not settling.
Seen many appeals to city council, just one.
I know, but that, but that's because, but now with a new, with a new square, with a new radius, it puts more pressure on the, on the, on that. Because the new radius is a totally different thing in terms of what it, what it impacts in terms of what it does.
I, I really felt that the conversation that helped support the council decision to approve the appeal was based strictly on the potential risk factor of a tree. Not on.
Which is never definite according to John McClane.
Yeah, and they acknowledged that as well, but not design-driven. There were a few comments made that, you know, what can we do to try to bring that tree back up to health? It's sick now, there are things that we can do to bolster its health in the long term. Can you, you know, make your house go this way or that way around the tree? So that was certainly a point that was, was being evaluated.
Well, for me on that tree, that, that tree is probably the best example we could have at that moment because for me on that tree, it had already been cabled, and the recommendation was to cable it further, right? I'm like, okay, so that, that to me was, that's where, that was so close to the line for me because that, it's like, if it's already been cabled and it hasn't gotten healthy, then it really, you know, but I didn't have a criteria that would let me say, you know, after three cables, you're, you can knock it down.
That was very different than the issue tonight.
Yeah.
That we considered tonight on the subject, I thought, very different.
Well, yeah, so the, so I, but I think what it is is that we've got to do, figure out how to get very consistently clear in a line because what we will just drive developers nuts, we'll drive, we'll drive the staff nuts, and we'll drive the town council nuts with not being able to say, what is our rule and what, you know?
Yeah, we can remember that. She is much different than, than how Kevin was. She is much more protective of.
Oh, that's absolutely right.
So this is a double whammy on us now. Like with Nancy, either I agree with your comments on, on the first, on, on the first time tonight, I completely, all of you. But yeah, we came to a different boat on it, more because I was looking at this thing saying, our arms, I mean, whether I liked the look of the tree or not, which I didn't, it's just that, it's, to me, it's a safe issue.
Are we really that tied by?
Yeah, that's, this is, this is where it gets confusing.
You are, you are really that tied, you're tied to the required findings, you're tied to the general plan, and consistency is very, very important for so many reasons. And I think what you miss when you sit here is all the work that's happened before something made it here. It's like you look at cases that are litigated, I mean, there are ninety-nine percent that never make it to court. And so I think it's just like here where if a developer knows, I better work with this arborist because if she recommends denial, there's a really solid chance planning commission isn't going to approve this. And I think that really having that reputation out in the community creates predictability, we can design around it. And I think adhering, I, I'm a strict constructionist, I keep coming back to, what does the general plan say? What, what do the ordinance say? What are the required findings? And if you just keep coming back to that, if something's broken, we need to change that, not the interpretation of it. Or, you know, bad facts make bad law. You know, you might have a couple where you look at it and you're like, God, that's a bit of a dog. But my hands are tied, well then, you know, let's take a look at the tree removal ordinance and see if it's working or not.
Well, let's watch this tree we voted on tonight and see if that business of damage to the roots and the health of the tree because it was so close to the demolition, let's see what comes of that. I know we've talked about other cases here in town, where a year or two later, maybe three, the tree just finally gradually died. It'd be horrible if they moved their garage and did all this stuff.
Well, but the thing about it is, we got to also balance the fact that, you know, oh darn, I broke, I hurt the roots, you know?
That's, that's a real, very real concern.
I mean, that, that backhoe was parked within, within twenty feet of that, of that tree.
Well, she could have gone there tomorrow, right? She needs to take a picture.
I mean, he was sitting there like, I'm ready to grab you up, I'm ready to grab you. I've got pictures of it going like, all right, well, you, you understand that's the issue. And anything you need to help us or anything you need to help you.
Can you, may I have one more thing? So you should say that again, which is we are really, as a planning commission, we have a different mandate than the town council. The council can make their thing, they're, they're a different body than we are. Ours, ours is really, I mean, the staff report to me is what always drives me generally, ninety-seven percent. But then also just what we all were, like you said, being consistent. That's a hard one because I obviously felt for these guys on their, you know, hey, I'd love to see you balance that side, whatever.
Well, their design, their design, like, you know, if I've been on, on one of the other planning missions by one, I would approve it like that. The design was absolutely perfect for, for that property and everything, and the look of it, and they went over it out to the neighborhood and everything else, but.
But when you have consistency and predictability, you know that you might want to get that removal permit or finalize. You're saying this because we're in Atherton, and architects know this.
Well, you could tell it, they even said it. Well, we did it, and we, it was sound told us, I weren't much of a guy.
Because if you start approving those, now you've got people who build into a corner, and you're, yeah, so.
We had that happen, you know, years ago, years ago, we used to have that happen regularly, it's like, oh, shoot, I, I woke up and my plan needs to change.
So, it's tricky.
All right, very good. All right, wait a minute.
Did you officially take the?
Okay, yeah, we can go now.
And move, we close.
All right. Move to second, move to second, all of us, then we say aye? Aye?